Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commandant's secretary, can we get roll call, please?
Roll call. Chair Carmelo Okendo.
Present.
Vice Chair Maria Theresa Carney.
Present.
Member Philip Lantry.
Present.
Member Jeff Rivera with an unexcused absence. Member Dawn Grisby.
Present.
He has an excused absence or he does not?
An excused absence.
Un.
Yes.
Yes, she did.
Member Nanette Douglas.
Present.
Member Russell Alexander with an excused absence.
Mr. Chairman, we have quorum, and Ms. Douglas is a voting member this evening. Voting Commissioner.
Okay, before we get to new business, has everybody read the minutes from the last meeting? And can we get a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second it.
I have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All passes.
This is four zero.
New order of business?
This is four zero, yes, sir. Sorry?
There's five of us, all right?
Excuse me, five of us, I apologize. Yeah, you're right.
Not gonna vote, but I'm glad.
Bad glasses, I'm sorry.
She's been reading too much, that little iPad thing he's got.
You're right. Five comes after four, you're exactly right.
Okay, we'll start with new business. We're gonna be doing ordinance number 2023-49, DRCK CDA 23-00002.
Good evening. I'm Tammy Recky, Senior Planner in Community Development, and I'm excited to present this ordinance for you today. It's been many months in the making. We've been working a while now to reorganize our land development code. I don't know if you had the opportunity to look at our code. For some reason, you maybe didn't find it very user-friendly. It can be confusing at times. There was some repetitions, some inconsistencies. So staff has been working really hard to clean that up and just make it easier, more user-friendly, more intuitive for the citizens and the developers and everyone to use. So this will be... The first ordinance I'm presenting tonight is about the reorganization itself. And then the second ordinance will be some changes that we're making with that reorganization. But this first part is mostly just for the code to make more sense. So on the left column, you can see the existing articles that we have right now. So we are changing those articles to chapters. And that's just consistent with how Osceola County has their code organized and other municipalities as well. It's just a way that it makes more sense. And a lot of people that are using Osceola County's code are also using our code. So we thought it would be... Make it easier for everyone if we could kind of try to make it as consistent as possible. So with that graphic, you can see that we shifted a lot of things around, just tried to organize all the different articles and the different subjects that we have in our code into chapters that make more sense for them to be grouped together. So in this presentation, I'll just go over some of the highlights of that, of how those chapters became reorganized. So a little bit more of the background, like I was saying. We've been working on this for a few months. We want this new code to be... Not only to follow more what the county has done when they modified their code a while ago, but also we wanted to take this opportunity to identify any inconsistencies that we have, any repetitive language, any ambiguous terms or requirements, make some clarifications, and of course, fix any grammatical errors. So we took a look at our code and had conversations about what would make more sense. So our Chapter 1 is where we decided to put all general provisions, information on administration boards and commissions. So it just... Right up front, when people come to our code, they know exactly that. They know information, including how the LDC can be used, who it applies to, and what are the regulatory bodies that we have in the city. And then with that introduction, we go to Chapter 2, which is where our development process, procedures, and permits will live. So that kind of establishes and consolidates what kind of permits are required, what kind of development processes there are for people to achieve what they want to achieve in the city. And that before was kind of all over the code. You have to know what you were doing to be able to find the information. And now, like even if you don't know what you're doing, you can come to this chapter and probably figure out the steps that you need to take by yourself. Chapter 3 is one of the longest of the reorganization, is our performance and siting standards. Is where we grouped all the zoning district-specific and use-specific standards. So before, we kind of had that living under Article 3 in our code. So the... One of the biggest differences with Chapter 3 that we'll talk more a little bit later is just how it is organized. And now each zoning district has their own tables of standards. So it makes it easier for people to find information. As where before or what we have right now, the tables live in our code where we have space for it and not necessarily where there's a logical place for them to be. Chapter 4 is specific site design and development standards. So with the order of the chapters, we wanted to kind of walk people through all the steps, right? So first, they kind of know what they're getting into. And then Chapter 2 with the development standards and processes, they can figure out what kind of process they need. And then you go into zoning districts, and then you see what are the specific requirements for the zoning district that you are located. And now you come into your site design. So this chapter will outline the standards for the development of those sites. And that can include the landscaping, lighting, parking, streets, just everything that they need for development. Chapter 5 is where our impact and mobility fees information will live. Before, or in our current code, they are just spread out into different articles. The calculations, the type of fees, they were just kind of all over the place. So we decided to just consolidate and have them all in one place, since those fees are usually calculated at the same time in the development process. So it just made more sense to have them all in the same place. And Chapter 6 is the construction design standards for pavement and drainage systems. So that one hasn't really changed from what we have in our code right now. We just gave it a new... Right now, we have it as an article, and then for this reorg, we're changing to a chapter. The same for environmental utilities. We basically just changed the article to Chapter 7. And then another one of our big changes was creating Chapter 8, which is a chapter dedicated for definitions. Yeah, I already talked a little bit about these, but just some highlights, chapter by chapter. The... With the Chapter 1, where people can learn more about the administration, how we do things in the city, what are the duties and responsibilities of the different boards and commissions, what kind of hearings, meetings, public notices, all related to those meetings. It's also where it made more sense to move our non-conformities, since those are, you know, non-conformities that don't really apply to like regular standards. And it was under this chapter that we added two new sections, which will be the next ordinance that we'll hear about. Basically, with this ordinance, the reorganization ordinance, we didn't change the content of the land development code. We mostly changed where things are located and what some of those things look like. So we created tables, but those tables don't necessarily have any new information. Like, we're not changing anything significant with this ordinance. We're just reorganizing so it makes more sense and it's visually better. But for the things that we are adding and we are changing, that's why we created a separate ordinance under the same case number. So I'll talk more about those points when we read that ordinance. Chapter 2, as I mentioned, is about our development processes. So these are just some examples of review processes that are outlined in that chapter and kind of what entails with each application. Chapter 3, that I mentioned, that was one of the largest chapters, is where we reorganize our zoning districts. So that includes the standard zoning districts, planned special districts, overlay districts, and then also use-specific regulations, signs, architectural design standards, and some supplemental regulations. So everything that we have in our code that is dictated by the zoning district that a parcel is located at lives under that chapter. And then this is just an example of how we restructured the zoning district regulations. Because right now, in our code, we had, you know, we had Article 3, and then we have... We had sections inside Article 3 with each of our zoning districts. But you have to go to a different page to find a table where it showed the permitted uses, where it showed all the development standards, like what's the minimum lot width, what's the minimum site area. So we thought it made more sense that that lived inside each zoning district. That way, if I want to build something in the highway business zoning district, if I go to that page, I have all the information that I need on one page instead of having to go treasure hunting across the code to try to find everything that applies to the highway business. So that was one of the biggest changes in terms of reorganization. So each zoning district has their purpose, has a permitted list of uses right at that page. So if I go to that page, I know exactly what I can do there, what I can't. It has that table with the designs, development standards, and then the other regulations applicable to that zoning district. So again, we're just kind of piecing together things that were spreaded across the code and then putting them where it made more sense for people. And then Chapter 4, this just goes more into details what the site design and development standards are. But those requirements, they can change based on what type of development they're proposing. So we just put all of that in the same chapter to make it easier. So when people now made the decision, you know, I look at the highway business page, I know what I can do, I know what I can build. Now, how do I prepare my plans? So this is taking them there. Some things that we wanted to just highlight as well are the... As far as the open space standards, the ones that we have right now, we just pulled from our current ordinance on landscaping and tree preservation. So we had our open space standards kind of hiding in that ordinance, and it was hard for people to understand what open space was or even to realize that they needed open space for their development until we told them about it. So we just wanted to give them like a more prominent space so people knew right away that that was a requirement. Some other regulations, again, they were just hiding in different articles. So we moved them to this chapter to give them more prominence. And then there is some space that we're leaving in that chapter to move some things that are right now in other articles that we didn't touch yet. So that will be the standards related to the design and layout of lots, blocks, streets, and driveways and axes that are contained on Chapters 6 and 7. So the idea is to pull the content from those chapters to add here as well so people don't have to go through the 50 pages of those ordinances to find the information that they're looking for. And then these are the chapters that we... Again, we kind of just moved things around and didn't change much besides the name. Chapter 5, consolidating the impact and mobility fees in one place. Like I mentioned before, they were all over the code before, so now they just have a central location. And then the Chapters 6 and 7, we just changed from article to chapter. And Chapter 8 was an exciting one to work on because people are always asking, what's our definition for this? And what's our definition for that? So when we were going through the code, we concluded that we had 527 definitions that were just spread out all over the code. And they were actually in 11 different locations within the LDC. So not only we had a lot of definitions, we had at least eight terms that were inconsistent or that in one part of the code, it said that it was one thing, but in another part of the code, it says it was another thing. Something else that we wanted to clean up with Chapter 8 is to keep definitions as definitions. As we were going through each one of these points, we also realized that a lot of these definitions also had regulations within them. So we wanted to make that very distinct, that a definition is just a definition. How you're gonna use that, it needs to live somewhere else, not under definitions. So that was the bulk of the work with Chapter 8, was to centralize the definitions in one place, remove any inconsistencies and repetitions, and then separate those regulations from the definitions. Chapter 10 of the Part 2 of the code. So that... So in our land development or in our code in general, we have the Part 1, that is our land development code. And then Part 2 will became building and building regulations. So these, again, we didn't change any of the content. We just moved things around to where it made more sense. So we renumbered some of the sections and moved some things that were in Article 13 to this just to give them an order and to make more sense. And it's our staff recommendation to approve ordinance 2349 to reorganize the land development code. And we're available if you have any questions for us.
Well, good job because I have heard over and over again that it says something one place and then it contradicted itself. So I'm sure that was just a lot of work, so congratulations. Although you said something about Chapter 4, that there was gonna be something that was gonna be still added. It was in Chapter 4, but you were still gonna be adding it to... Just do that one one more time for me. I didn't follow that.
So on Chapter 4, where we have the site design and development standards, we wanted to add some information that is... That lives in Article 6 and Article 7 right now, which turn into Chapters 6 and Chapter 7. So we are revising that language a little bit. So we just wanted to point out that there's room for it. Yes. But our intention is to move that to that chapter.
So it'll kind of be a little bit of repetition, but it will be ease for the user, right? Because it will be in 4, and then it will go into the other two as well.
Yes, exactly. Because right now, Chapters 6 and 7 are mostly like the public works chapters. So when people, they're at the construction phase and they go in and they see what they need to do. So we wanted to bring that information to them a step back when they're doing their plans.
Any other questions for staff?
I guess before, as it was building over the years, right? There would be a permit, and then they'd say, oh wait, you need a permit for this. So then they would throw it in there. And that's probably why it kind of just got pieced together the way that it did, I'm assuming. So this is just helpful for everybody once they have it. The idea of what they're trying to do, it's one-stop shop, hopefully, for them.
Yes, correct. So one of the biggest ones that were like that, if you go to Division 20 in our code right now, which is supplemental regulations, everything is just thrown in there. Everything that was passed or was proposed, you know, after the code was created, just got thrown into that division without a lot of thought. So that was one of the things that we just wanted to make more sense. And when people are reading the code, not that a lot of people will read it from Chapter 1 to Chapter 10, but that it follows in order and that it's more intuitive to find information.
Helpful for staff, too.
Yes.
Well, thank you for making it easier to understand for everybody. That's definitely helpful.
We have no more questions for staff.
Public comment.
Public comments, please. There's no public comments, we'll be closing it. Public comments? Any questions amongst yourselves? If not, can I entertain a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number... Let me get this one right here. Let me see, case number? Ordinance number 2023-49, based on the 16 findings within the land development code.
I have a first or I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
And the factors on the land development code, this is just land development code changes.
I know. It's in my papers.
Okay. Next business is ordinance number 2023-50, DRCK CDA 23-00002.
So as we were going through this process of reorganizing the code, it's our goal in the next year to amend some sections of the land development code. But we wanted to do the reorganization first to then take a look at it in this new organized form to see what we're missing, what we can make it better. But as we were going through the process this first time around, to, again, just to increase clarity and to make more sense to people, we felt that some changes we needed to do right now instead of waiting until we do other changes. So that's what this ordinance is, is for some of the substantive changes that we are proposing. And they are part of... And they're gonna be part of Chapter 1. So we are adding just some language to the land development code to clarify and to establish some rules of construction, interpretation, measurements, and calculations. So first, like I mentioned before, we're adding those two new sections. So one is rules of interpretation and one is rules of measurement. Kind of go into what they mean a little bit. So rules of construction and interpretation. This is mainly to help people understand when we say something in the code, what does it really mean? So if we have a word that's in plural, what do we mean by that? Some of the things can seem kind of obvious, but sometimes when you're reading a lot of code and trying to interpret the code, it can get ambiguous or confusing. So these are just things like, you know, when we say the applicant shall do this, what do we mean by shall do? Do they have to do it? Do they not? Is it negotiable? And things like that. So these are the kind of things that we were trying to make it clear with this section. So in the ordinance, we kind of separated by meanings and intent. And then sections, headings, text, and graphics. And that just kind of goes over, you know, if we have... If we have a graphic that's just making it clear that that's not everything that we'll accept. It's just an example to help people visualize what we're talking about. But that doesn't mean that that graphic is the only thing that we'll accept. The same with lists and examples, that every time we have lists and examples in the code, if it doesn't say, you know, that these are the only things that are acceptable or these are the things that are prohibited, that doesn't mean that the lists or the examples are comprehensive. So just making some things that, for some people, can be common sense. But when we're, again, doing this and developing, we don't want to leave room for various interpretations. We want to make it very clear what is the city's intent with those words and with everything that we're saying in the code. When we talk about public officials, so some parts of the code talks about, like the city manager's designee can approve this. So what does that mean? Like, who is a designee? Who is a public official? So it just makes it clearer for people, again, the intent and the meanings behind the code. Same with time, mandatory discretionary terms, and also interpretive disputes. So that lives under rules of construction and interpretation. Will be Article 5 inside Chapter 1. And then in Article 6, we have rules for measurement and calculations. So when we study math, sometimes are wrongly taught, I guess, that measurements and numbers are definite and they're the same and they're standard. But believe it or not, a lot of places, they measure things differently, right? Some people may measure their lot dimensions in a way or their lot width at the street or at the setback line, you know. It can be differences, especially when it comes to land development. It can be different interpretations of what setbacks are, where the height of a structure starts, what is density, what is the lot dimensions, and things like that. So we just wanted to make it very clear for people. In St. Cloud, this is how we calculate things. In St. Cloud, this is how we measure setbacks. This is how we're gonna measure the height of your structure, how we're gonna calculate density, and things like that. So these are not necessarily new things or new measurements. They just weren't clear in the code before. And then the reason we're doing this separate ordinance is just kind of to call that out, that these... This is how... This is the standards that we've been using, but it wasn't just, you know, in a prominent place in the code to make it easier for people to understand it, so. Those are the major changes. And then again, in Chapter 8, because of this, because of this ordinance, those are some of the terms and definitions that were amended in Chapter 8, which is a reflection of this new article. But again, we kept Chapter 8 strictly for definitions, and then the regulations live inside those two articles in Chapter 1. And it's staff's recommendation to approve ordinance 2350. And we're happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Have you considered or are you... Is there any intent to add some sort of commentary, if you will? If anybody's familiar with the building code, there's a, a commentary that's often published along with it. So that when you, you know, obviously when you're reading the code, you know, it's very legalese and there's a lot of terms that people may not understand. So I was just wondering if that was a consideration in putting this together, if there's any sort of commentary that may be issued as well.
Okay. And now with, with the reorganization right now, we haven't talked about that, but it's something that we can consider and, and discuss for the other changes that we're making to the code.
What do you mean, for example?
So commentary is basically like layman's terms of what they mean in the code. So it gives examples a lot of times.
So that what they're doing here, you mean deeper?
Like, like this part here where it has the example and it's on page five of eight. And it says, you know, it has an example of the calculations. It would be something like that, but it would give you an example for each code article. I mean, hopefully it's easy enough to understand that you don't need the commentary, but, you know, sometimes it still can be difficult.
I had to read it four times before I could figure out what an FPE was. It's there. I just had to read it four times before I could find it.
And are you gonna have any grandfathered-in-laws in all these changes and with the measurements and the height and all that?
So what we have already in our code that, that protects the, that's already grandfathered in is not changing. Whatever we have in our code right now about that, it will be the same. It would just be in a different place, but we're not changing that language.
I did have a, a little bit of a difficult time following what actually changed text-wise or language-wise. Because some of the, the things that were, had the strike-throughs, they had a strike-through because they moved to a different section. So it wasn't completely clear in this document what language actually changed. And I understand the strike-through means that the language was taken out. The underline means that the language was added. But there were some things in here that, that they weren't. The language that was added was to say that it moved to another section. So I don't, I don't know exactly what language changed. One, one language that I did see changed was in chapter eight, under building height of. I just wanted to look at that real quick. It, the original, it originally said the vertical distance from the grade to the highest point of a flat roof or a mansard roof or to the mean height level between eaves and ridge for gable hip and gambrel roofs. And then the added text was elevation of the ceiling of the highest habitable space. See section one point six point three for greater detail on measuring height of a structure. So I was curious on that one, why was that changed from the mean height between the eve and the peak, or I'm sorry, the eve and the highest point to the elevation of the ceiling of the highest habitable space? I was just wondering why it changed. It's, it's less stringent in the sense that, you know, I'm just thinking of an idea here or, you know, an example where somebody could build a house with a very high pitched roof that could be 20 feet higher to the peak of the roof than the actual height of the ceiling. And so I'm just wondering if that language should be reviewed. Cause you could run into a situation where somebody's building a house next to another house and their house ends up being like 40 feet high or something simply because they had a low ceiling and a habitable space, but they had, you know.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. And so a lot of these, that, that change, it was again, in an effort to be consistent with kind of what the county has in their code and some, and what's standard in other places. But we can take a look more into that.
I just think that that, that particular language of the elevation of the ceiling of the highest habitable space, you know, there's a lot of room for interpretation there on what a ceiling is versus the top of the actual building. And, you know, I just, I think it makes sense to take another look at that and reconsider the language outlining what the height limitations are. I think that was the only thing that I saw that was actually changed though. As far as I could tell, the density for commercial and residential uses appears to be the same for the calculations.
Yeah, those were just moved from the definitions part to go to the, to the rules of interpretation section.
So that's, that's all the comments I have.
Any other questions? We have no more questions. We'll open up for public comments. No public comments. We'll be closing public comments. Any conversations amongst yourselves? If not, may I entertain a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty-two-three dash fifty.
I have a first, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes. Okay, next ordinance is ordinance number twenty-two-three dash fifty-one. DRC case number DCA twenty-three dash zero 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 three.
Good evening. Carol Zapata, Senior Planner for Community Development. I am presenting the Public Art Land Development Code Amendment. This amendment is proposing to establish regulations, standards, and requirements for public art for certain non-residential developments. This is basically for the beautification of St. Cloud. So it promotes quality of life for the citizens, the businesses, workers, and visitors by integrating art and spaces in the public, public and semi-public spaces. And it's providing a legacy of artworks to be enjoyed for future generations. This is a new article that will be added. It will be under Article 10, under Public Art Establishments. And these are the sections that will be added under it. So the applicability of the public art requirements, provisions, and artwork. Basically, what these sections are pertaining to is what's considered art, what regulations have to, have to be abided by, and your options based on how you are going to place the public art. You will see here examples of what the public art would be. So basically, this is just, it won't be exact, it's not so that they make these exactly like this, but it's so that they have an idea of what we mean when we say art or when we're saying this will count towards public artwork. In the top left with the, I want to say the, like, kind of a, the, what is it, pipes that are, that are in the top? That wouldn't be exactly what we mean by that. But if you see like in the middle one, like where it uses like your utility boxes, that's an example of something that would be like an eyesore that is then converted into something that is artwork and beautifies the space instead of just kind of sitting there and giving an eyesore within the front space. This is the overall ordinance or literature for the ordinance of twenty-two-three fifty-one. And staff is recommending approval of ordinance twenty-two-three fifty-one. And staff is available for any questions that you may have for this article.
I guess my question is, we don't do that now? We have nothing that's out there that's considered art or whatever? And I have seen lots of cities where they paint the electric boxes and things like that.
Yeah, like Osceola and such. So right now, what this is doing is that it's removing standards that currently right now only qualify for CDBD one and CBD, sorry, my, my abbreviation. CBD one and CBD two. Those are the only commercial zonings right now that this qualifies for. So what this is doing is extracting it and making it so that all commercial zonings have to qualify under this and residential developers, so our large developers that are bringing in six, seven phases of a development, are also having to put into the public art. Whether they're gonna put it on that site specifically or they're gonna give that 1% to us as the city where we can place it, where we decide or deem where it would be necessary or best used.
Okay, so 1% of what they're developing has to be?
So it would be your, and give me one moment, I have it on here. It would be the 1% of the development construction project amount. So they have multiple options. So they can do just, for example, the one option where they give us the 1% of the construction value of that project or in cash value. Or they can say, I'm gonna give you 50% in cash value and 50%, I'm gonna put it as art in my location or onsite. They can do that, but it still has to total that 1% of what that construction value of that project is.
So then if, can it be combined if multiple entities give you different funding, like a 50-50 split or whatever, then it goes into basically a fund? And then something can be done in total utilizing that for, it's a bigger project for the city?
So what I'm understanding is you're saying like, for example, this developer gives into this fund and yes.
Right, like, oh, we're only gonna go up this much, so yeah.
Yeah, we could decide to say, you know what, in downtown here, we're gonna set an area for like events where it could be used on Wednesdays when the, when we do.
Right, but it's bigger than the, it's bigger than the amount that this one developer gave. So but in total with all of it, then you can do bigger projects for the city as we develop Florida Avenue or, or the Lakefront or whatever.
Correct.
So will the city spend any money in particular or are we all, are we gonna use some other people's money?
We did not exempt ourselves absolutely from it. So if there's a fire station, a police station, or any of our own personal developments, we would also be putting into that public art.
So there'll be a budgeted item, a, a budgeted line?
Correct, correct. We did exempt schools just because obviously we want that funding to be used in the school itself.
Well, could you ask the county to see if they would help out if you're in the school zone or in the fire department zone and pick it like, you know, one of the kids that's gonna go to art school or something, let them do it.
So in here, it certifies specifically what would qualify of who can be contracted to do the art because it has to be a business from the city of St. Cloud. It has to be, have to be established over a, show that they've been established for over a year that more than 50% of what they bring in stays here in the city of St. Cloud because we want to keep the business here in St. Cloud. But for example, that would be a perfect example that if we have a school, we would like to put a piece, an, an art piece or something along that line, we'd be able to use that fund from option one in that location because we have those funds available from our end.
Can you talk about just in section one, the areas that are, have strike-throughs? Are these, are these just rewritten?
So that is the section of the, while this reorg is happening, that's from the section of the reorg that just had CBD one and CBD two be affected by this. So it was structured.
That's what I thought, but it wasn't completely clear because it was just that little section was taken out and placed on a page.
And you also see how well like we had just this little parameter. And, you know, where now we've expanded so that we make sure that when they are giving us this art and when we are asking for these funds, they're used in a way that is for the community, that helps beautify St. Cloud.
So is there, is there any exemptions available?
So if.
If there is, for what?
Mm-hmm, so exemptions, for example, if I have a building that's already, it's already built and they're just doing like an interior alteration, they do not have to put in or create public art. If they expand over 50%, they would have to provide either putting into the public art fund or they would have to do one of the options of creating art on the outside and following one of the five options that we have available to them to provide the art for us.
Is that more than 50% of the current square footage?
Correct.
Okay. So would there be any other exemptions though for, I'm just?
Yeah, so for residential, like if I'm just doing a lot split or what we consider like a small development in that sense, where it's just, you know, one guy that's dividing his one lot and putting the two properties, we're not gonna make that person do the art fund. But if I have a very large builder that's bringing in, you know, seven, you know, seven to eight phases and they're bringing in over 3,000 houses, they are the ones that would have to put into the art fund.
Yeah.
It also does an exemption to your public schools. Let me see, I also have exemption for anything that's already existing development. Those are truly your exemptions on there. Your, other than that, if you're developing brand new, you have to.
What about a commercial business that say provides assistance to people? For some, I don't know, veterans or whatever, a, a commercial building, but it provides assistance? So, yeah, like, yeah, for instance, so that, I mean, obviously money's gonna be very tight for them to build something and provide assistance. Is, is there any exemptions for, you know, that type of business?
So it depends because I do know that, for example, we do have exemptions for buildings that are like, like storage hazardous, not access to the general public, radioactive infectious materials, national security, like.
Places you don't want people around anyway.
Yeah, those type of locations. But staff can definitely look into, if you're talking about kind of like community centers or that type of thing.
Yeah.
Staff can definitely look into that.
I mean, I do think there's some uses that should not be held down to, to provide a percentage, especially places that would provide assistance or civic uses, community, you know, type uses, that kind of thing.
Staff could definitely look into that.
Yeah, I, I really agree with you on that because even if it is just small businesses, it's very expensive to have a small business in St. Cloud. And whenever the businesses are now required to do that, like maybe they just need to expand a little more seating or something, now they have to add that on. That's where I would also say, but, but I think you just said more than 50% expansion. So if they just added something that was less than 50% of what they were, that would be an exemption.
Correct, and that's, and that, and that's why that was put into there because if we have a business, for example, that's coming down to our downtown area and all they're doing is, you know, giving it a little facelift, changing the inside, we are not trying to, like you said, add an extra cost on top of what they're already doing because they are trying to bring in business and bring, you know, bring in money to the, the city. It would be if it's something where it's over that 50% because then at that point, you're, you're expanding the use and then it has to comply to current code.
And so I think that might protect, like, I'm just gonna say, like the veterans place right here, if they were to have to add something on or fix something, for them to have to add that 1%, they would be, right to your point, that would be a, a kind of a burden.
Yeah, they would have to expand more than 50% of that square footage for it too.
Yeah.
To come into play.
But yeah, I do think you should consider for places that would provide assistance or, you know, where the money could be used better elsewhere. I have another question about art is typically considered subjective, right? Some people like it, some people don't. So what, who decides whether it's art or not? Is there an architecture review board?
Yes, so in here it's telling you.
Review the artwork?
Correct. So in here it's saying how like the, it will have to have to get evaluation. So it would have to be from an artist from the city of, of St. Cloud. They would have to prove that they've been over a year in business in the city of St. Cloud. But it has to, they have to also show that it meets the requirements under this. So under here, it gives you how, what we consider to be the artwork. So it's telling you here how it's tapestry, carvings, monuments, forcos, fountains, paintings, photographs. And then it's letting you know how it's like for reproductive, if it's reproductive. So if I have someone who, or a developer who gives me 100 blue trash cans, it's no longer art. It's just 100 blue trash cans and it's just a feature.
And what about disputes? Do we have something in here that outlines? Do we have something in here that outlines how disputes happen? Because, you know, obviously, I can see somebody saying that they believe that they have beautiful artwork, and it gets denied by the city, and then it becomes a lawsuit. How do we prevent that?
So when they are applying for this public art, they provide it at SCP/SDP level for us. So it's provided when it comes in to staff, and they would have to provide the paperwork on that end, but we can definitely, I can probably put into here where we would see within that parameter, if what you're talking about is if they wanted to go like to a Board of Adjustment or something along that line, like if they wanted to contradict.
More so, they just disagree with the, you know, they submit something that they believe is art, and the artist that's employed by the city disagrees, and then there's some sort of dispute.
Well, that could happen anyway. I mean, it's just like being hired for a position. You think you're the perfect person for that position, and somebody else gets picked. Better applicants have applied, so better art was submitted. I'm not sure if you can ever stop them, there's going to be litigation, right, where litigious world, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We had that incident with the tower here.
Yeah, so on here, it gives you like your eligible art organization, which is what we would use. So if we're using that eligible art organization that's saying, you know, giving us their 501, so they're basically, they're qualified, they're the qualified party to let you know if it's art or not, that's what we would fall under that section, letting them know this is the qualified party that's saying if this is art or not. The code is letting you know that this is the qualified party that will let you know.
But really, at any point in time, that art's going to go somewhere, it's possible that there's going to be more than one person that wants to submit their art for that place or that design or that box or what have you, right? So there probably is going to be an opportunity for other people to come in, so it doesn't necessarily mean that whoever wants to put art there is going to get to, right? I mean, there's a whole, the process. Are we beating this dead horse, or?
Good evening, T. Shemann, Zoning Manager. So the public art is based upon the actual development. So Ms. Grisby, Council Grisby, if I'm correct, you're asking about public art in which the city may want to place somewhere, and then we were, you know, of course, hire someone, maybe put out an RFQ, people would bid on it, and then that's how that would be selected. It wouldn't just be us saying, hey, I like what, you know, this person does, let's go ahead and let them. So if anytime the city is going to employ someone to put the artwork, then we're going to go through the process of RFQ and bids and things like that.
Thank you. I have a question.
Yes.
What are we pulling away from painting the buildings, like the engineer building and, you know, all those?
In the, if you see in the exhibit, on here, it does have, if you look in the bottom, right, it has the mural as one of the art pieces.
Why are we going away from that point?
So that we can provide more, not just that type of specific art, but also art, artistic things that are functional also, so that it's not just art that's just there to be there. For example, when you're looking at those bike racks, where we're trying to get people to not bring all these cars here on Wednesday, they have somewhere where they could put their bikes. We have somewhere where people can sit and, you know, have from their food truck food. So it's also putting in the functionality with the art, so that it's not just art that's there to be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, just one more question. Sorry, guys.
Go ahead.
Is this artwork that somebody would propose, does it have to meet certain wind criteria or storm criteria? In other words, who, who is going to inspect it to make sure it's not going to blow away and hit someone's house or somebody, or is that, is there anything in there for that? We do live in Florida, and we get hurricanes, so.
Good evening again, T. Shemann, Zoning Manager. So as Carol stated earlier, any type of artwork that's going to be incorporated in the design of the development is going to go through the same review process as anything else would. So we will review it, you know, at subdivision, construction, site development, whatever timeframe. The DRC Committee, which includes building, will also review the artwork. So it's going to have to meet all of the standards. They're not going to be able to go out there and just put, you know, some PVC pipes in the ground and say that's art.
Right, okay.
So it will be required to meet the standards.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Any other questions? There's no more questions. We'll open for public comments.
Good evening. Carolina Roddy, 500 Dakota Avenue. I just think that what Mr. Lantrey was saying is a wise thing to support, because there will always be disagreements, and if we have systems in place, it just cuts through a lot of the extra unnecessary stuff. So if there's a system in place, I do think it would be a wise thing.
Can you just state your name and address? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Carolina Roddy, 500 Dakota Avenue.
Okay, great. And we'll, we'll have a form for you to fill out for the, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? If not, we'll be closing public comments. Any comments amongst yourselves? You're all good? Go ahead. I entertain a motion, please.
I'll move to make, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2023-51.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes.
I have zero.
Okay, next meeting will be?
Our next scheduled meeting is for November 14th, that's 6:00 P.M.
Thank you, ma'am.
November what?
November 14th.
Thank you.
6:00 P.M.
Okay, do I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
On.